Okay, it's 2:30, so we'll start. Graham, I want to thank you for joining yet once again to help us through this. Also joining us is Daniel Ellis, who is Chair of the Planning Commission. Daniel, thank you. The way I'd like to proceed with this is, first of all, not to go through page by page, or we will be here for an eternity. What I suggest we do is start off and ask Graham to give us a recap, then go to Daniel and ask if he would like to give us the perspective of the Planning Commission, and then I thought we'd just go roundtable with some comments from each of you. And if there are detailed, down-in-the-weeds comments, please write them out, rather than spend a lot of time here, so we don't lose track of it, and we can get the manuscript over to Doug, who can work with Graham. Anybody have any questions at all?
Yeah, Mayor, were there any... We have two council members not in attendance. Were they known to be... have some conflict today?
They hadn't said anything.
I talked to Larry about an hour ago, and he said he would see us at 2:30.
Maybe something's happened.
I had a question. I assume we need to take a roll call vote? A roll call, I mean?
There's no voting today.
Oh, there isn't? Okay.
I was running for a roll call. This is just an information session. And I want to stress to all of you, you know, we're not trying to move quickly with this. It's been dragging on now for about three years. So, you know, another month or two won't hurt us if it's going to give us time to incorporate some of your thoughts and suggestions into it. So please, don't think that we're trying to move quickly with it at this point. Okay, anybody else? All right, Graham, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Can everybody hear me okay? Yep.
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I've got just a few slides to walk through. Can everybody see on their screen a cover page, kind of a waterfall on a Bella Vista Comp Plan 2040?
Uh, nope.
Not yet.
Larry, was there a screen?
We need to meet him, a co-host. Share the screen, so I'm going to do that now.
He's good. Did you hear that, Graham?
I got it now.
We got it.
I'm sorry, what?
You're okay. You're on now.
We're good now? Okay. All right, just forgot to hit one button, so. My name's Graham Smith. I'm with Gould Evans. We're out of Kansas City. We've been working with you all in the community for about the last three years, as the mayor said. And this draft plan that you guys have been looking at is a result of that work, collaboration with several different folks, a steering committee made up of various representations, including the POA, Cooper Communities, neighborhood folks, business owners, and different, as I said, different interests throughout the community. And so our structure really, for the project, was to reach out to the community at large for information and feedback, and then meet with our advisory committee, steering committee, to make sure that we were headed in the right direction for the plan and for the community for the future. Our process, if I can get this to work, is what you see on the screen right now. We started, as I said, in late, late, kind of, 2017, setting up the project, getting a work plan put together and an engagement plan. We worked through the community assessment process, which was really looking at data, looking at census data, economic data, physical data for your community, and then comparing that with interviews, focus groups. We had one large public meeting that provided feedback on some of the information that we had gathered to kind of paint a picture of where your community is at today. And from that, we jumped into visioning. And we had, I guess technically, visioning was our first big public meeting. We presented the community assessment and then asked... I think we had over eighty, maybe over a hundred people in attendance at that first public meeting. And we put them through a series of exercises, working on maps, responding to survey questions, and giving us some design ideas for the future of the community. And that visioning session really set us out from just data gathering and discussions to really starting to look at the community in 20 years, 25 years. And so from that, we crafted our vision goals and what we call targets. From the visioning session, as I said, we started to move forward. And from the vision and goals, we started to identify some community frameworks. From those frameworks, we identified, well, we identified six frameworks, which really provide the broader policy guidance for the plan. And once we had constructed those and started to add some detail to it, we had a framework summit, again, about 75 to 80 people in that session, again, trying to put them to work in terms of helping us refine the community frameworks, defining how they apply to different parts of the community, and really understanding what the future of the community should be with regard to all these different topics, and I'll go into those in a little bit more detail in a minute. And then finally, we started to prepare the comprehensive plan. So we took all of that existing information from the community assessment and created kind of a existing conditions and opportunities and challenges such into the plan. We identified the broad themes for the community, which generally align with the community frameworks. And then we started to delve into the land use policies, urban design policies, those broader policy documents, policy pieces. And then the final chapter of the plan is focused on more action items and community design. And so here we are, kind of at the very end of the process, with Planning Commission hearing it last month, and then this work session, and then I believe the original schedule was for you all to take it up next month. So for the themes, these themes that were identified early on in the process by the community, by our steering committee, really, kind of, as I said, set the framework for the whole plan. So, in essence, the comprehensive plan is a document that allows you a framework to work within, to make long-term decisions about your community. Hopefully, more informed decisions about your community, because it identifies the things that are important to the community, important to business owners, important to residents, in this case, important to the POA, important to Cooper Communities, and those types of things. And so the number-one theme, without a doubt, was the identity. A lot of people talked about the rolling hills, the wooded nature of the community, the recreational amenities, all of those natural features that people identify Bella Vista with. The second theme was development patterns, and really trying to focus on a future development pattern that would set you up for success to take advantage of some of the economic disparities in the community and continue to grow as a residential community and supplement that with commercial development. Third was economic development, again, along those commercial development lines and growing your economy within Bella Vista and capturing some of that retail leakage and job leakage to Rogers and even Fayetteville and Bentonville. The fourth one was connectivity. You all, as a community, inherited 550 paved miles of road, and even more road than that. And how do we, in a community with your topography and your natural resources, how do we create a more connected community so that movement throughout the community and accessing different destinations is made easier and more efficient? Not only for the automobile, but also for pedestrians and cyclists and things like that. And part of, a big part of the connectivity discussion was centered around the trail network and the future implementation of the trail network. Fifth was governance. Having come into this project and recognizing what a unique governance structure you have in your community in terms of the POA, the city, and Cooper Communities, we started to focus on how those three entities can start to cooperate better, to actually get things done in the community and allow that growth and development within that you all are experiencing now to actually benefit the community to a greater degree. And then finally, this idea of productivity. And this is really about offsetting your liabilities with future revenues, so that you can be a fiscally sustainable community and not just a sustainable destination in terms of a city, but also providing the revenues from property taxes, sales tax, those types of things that you generate to offset the cost for infrastructure, which you have some of, not a whole lot of, and then the road network as well. And so that took a little bit different approach for your community than we would in most. From those themes, we identified a vision statement, as I said, and this is all in the document. I just cut out a few pieces of the overall document to share with you today. But the vision talks about unique and diverse community. Again, the emphasis on the natural setting, the wooded hills, lakes, and open space. But the development pattern takes a little bit of a shift. Where you were originally built as a resort community with specific destinations, we want to build on the village idea in terms of strengthening some of those destinations and creating community amenities in certain spots that are easily accessible for people. Talk about future prosperity, it's your natural character, quality development, reliable public services or infrastructure, community spaces, and recreational activities. And then you'll see, we also talk about a well-maintained city with resilient tax base. And ultimately, the plan comes down to, how do we start to protect and strengthen those things as stewards for the future of the community so that we can recognize the strong community that Bella Vista can be in the future? So based on the vision, we started to talk about the goals for the community. And so there's seven goals, and the seven goals generally align with those themes. And I'm not going to go through each one of these, but they do focus on, again, natural character, development pattern. What's interesting about the development pattern and what we heard from the community was this idea about the village centers being something that the community really needed. But we also needed to remember that we want to create strong neighborhoods for families and people to live in that may be outside of those village centers and have access to them. We talked about the transportation network. We talked about the appropriate types of development in terms of strategic and targeted, so that we don't lose our character. And then strengthening the development patterns with supportive infrastructure, which you have limited control over currently. And then community collaboration to affect change. So how do we work together as a community to change our community the way we want? So at that point, with the vision, goals, and policies, we started to pivot and write the actual comprehensive plan document. And if you've noticed, the plan is really centered around, the plan components are really centered around four primary pieces. That's an urban design policy, which really starts to talk about and provide guidance for the public areas within your community. So the roadways and the streetscapes along those roadways, different gateways and corridors within the community, as well as parks and open space throughout the community, and how those areas start to frame the development that we'd like to see in the community. And then the future land use policy is more focused upon the development side. So whereas the public, excuse me, the urban design plan is really that public sector framework, this future land use plan is really the private sector framework. And so this is a little different than your typical land use plan in terms of identifying areas for activity centers, excuse me, centers. We've got neighborhood centers, village centers, and community destinations, which are those village centers that people, in particular, the community and the steering committee thought were an appropriate way to inject commercial development and a little bit of density in the area, in the community, without spreading it across the community and affecting the strong neighborhoods that you already have or continuing to create those strong neighborhoods. So it's a very targeted approach to adding commercial services and a mix of uses that serve the community. In addition to those different centers, we have something called trailside stops, which the policy idea behind that is along the trail network, because it is such a regional, national, and even international draw for some people, is that you start to allow some of those smaller services to exist along certain points of the trail to serve people that are using that. And then finally, we talk about the design elements within the land use plan itself. And we start to talk about use, form, and relationships. We also carve out within the mixed-use areas, whether they're retail, institutional, park, some residential in those mixed-use centers. And then you'll notice that the majority of the map is still kind of a light yellow color, which indicates those strong neighborhoods again. And then the third policy plan was what we call development form. And this really focuses on the mixed, the activity centers, as well as the neighborhoods in terms of protecting neighborhoods and protecting neighborhood scale, pattern, and character. And within the urban, within the village centers or the activity centers, those circles, starting to talk about the scale, pattern, uses, and those types of things within each one of those, so that they are unique kind of destinations that build on the natural environment and allow people to easily access those if they're in the community or attract people, in the case of the one along 71 towards the south, more of a regional destination that can help serve visitors to the trail system, visitors to Bella Vista, and those types of things. And then again, with the form getting into the design elements of place, pattern, connections, and then their relationship to the trail. And then finally, the mobility, I'm sorry, the fourth one was the mobility network plan. And so again, focusing on multimodal connectivity. So where you have a very robust street system, your pedestrian connectivity and your bicycle connectivity, as you might imagine with a topography such as yours, in many parts of the neighborhoods and things, those connectivity elements aren't there. So starting to talk about using the trail system in a different, or using a trail system to promote some of that connectivity, whether it's by bike, or whether it's by pedestrian, or whether, in some cases, it may be by both. But providing better connectivity of streets and trail networks. Within those destinations, the yellow dots on here are those activity centers. We're identifying those as pedestrian zones, where the street, the sidewalk network, excuse me, should be very robust in those areas to allow people to walk within those destinations very easily and freely to frequent many businesses at one time. And then the idea of building these activity centers with future transit in mind. So for those people that are in the community that either can't drive, don't want to drive, or can't ride a bike, or walk to different locations, providing some sort of transit service in the future so that they can access those services as well. And then finally, the economic development strategy is really built around targeting local investments and leveraging your current assets. If you've read the, if you've read the document, the existing conditions report that we put together, I think the number was $137 million annually that you all lose in sales tax revenue to Bentonville and Rogers and the rest of the region, quite honestly. And so a lot of the economic development was talking about, how do we allow and grow those local businesses and allow businesses to come into our community in the right circumstances to provide those services that people are going elsewhere for now? So that'll take some time, but that was the, kind of, the underpinnings of the economic development strategy. And then when we talk specifically about development and redevelopment, we're talking about infrastructure and land. We're talking about retail, residential, hotels and resorts potentially, office development, and healthcare, so those different uses that could be brought or grown within Bella Vista to help serve the community, again, that other people are leaving the community, most people are leaving the community for now. And then one of the things we did was with the policies and strategies, we started to document some of the areas that redevelopment and development would be likely and try to illustrate, conceptually illustrate, what the policies and strategies might lead you to in terms of a development pattern or redevelopment. On the right, you have Town Center, the north, northeast quadrant of the Town Center, interchange along 71. And the dark red store there is the expansion of the Harps Grocery Store and repositioning of that whole center to be more walkable, a little bit more dense in terms of mix of uses and ability to access that area. And on the left, I always forget the name of this area, but it's the junction of 340 and 279. Is that right?
Yep. Highlands, Highlands Gate.
Highlands Gate, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And so really, we saw the opportunity for Highlands Gate to be more of a, what we refer to as a community center in terms of really being a true kind of mixed-use destination in terms of providing for the residents of Bella Vista. Whereas the things along 71 may be more transient population-oriented in terms of people moving through the community and providing services for those folks as well as local folks. This one, being in the center of the community, we felt had the opportunity and had the size that could provide a lot of different things, including a commercial and mixed-use center, higher intensity, multifamily housing. And when I say higher intensity, I'm not talking about high-rise. I'm talking about townhomes, duplexes, maybe some small apartments, but nothing, nothing grandiose, probably nothing above three stories. School, single-family residential, maybe a little bit different format than what's in Bella Vista today. And some of those other institutional and office uses that could truly create kind of a town center and some green space that would service the community as well. And so again, just conceptually, how do we, how do we look at the policies and strategies we've constructed to try to define a place for development or redevelopment? And then the final piece was implementation. I apologize for the quality of this slide, but there's an implementation section that identifies strategies and actions. These aren't all the strategies and actions, obviously, but these are the ones that are most important, we feel like, to get Bella Vista continue, continue to move forward. So. And that represents the end of the slides that I had, and that's a quick overview. So for the first, probably, year, we had really good participation of both the public and our advisory committee. For those of you that were on our advisory committee and involved from the public side, some of our public meetings, we spent a significant amount of time in the middle of the process, waiting on Cooper Communities to respond to a request for meetings and actually sitting down with them and understanding their plans. And that set us back a little bit, and then we were able to meet with them and come back to our steering committee and finally pull the plan together. And again, I guess I'd like to reiterate that this is a policy document that hopefully will help you all make more informed decisions about the future of your community in light of what the community, our advisory committee, planning commissioners, and other folks have told us about the community. So with that, I will stop talking.
Okay, thank you, Graham. Larry, I think you came in late. And so what we're going to do is not go through the entire report page by page. Instead, we're opening with a recap from Graham, which he has just finished. And then we'll go to Daniel Ellis, who's Chair of the Planning Commission, for any comments. Then we will go to each individual member of council for thoughts, not too lengthy, please. And then I also urge you to write down your detailed thoughts. Oh, hi, Doug, I didn't see you come in. So that we do not lose track of them. Get them to Doug, and so we can blend in whatever has to be done into the plan. And for Doug and Larry, the exercise here is not to rush through this thing. This is simply a good time for Graham, so we brought it to you. And then it'll give you time to digest his comments, the comments from the other members of council, and then to develop any additional thoughts that you want in writing and get them to Doug. So in keeping with the agenda, Daniel is the Chair of the Planning Commission. This has gone through the Planning Commission. Daniel, were there any comments from the commissioners? And then, you know, you're also a PE, and you're involved in this type of work every day. And if you have any comments of what you have seen, we certainly appreciate it.
Yeah, I think the first thing to point out is the Planning Commission did look through this, and we did approve this unanimously with very little discussion. We actually listened to Graham and didn't really have a whole lot of questions for him in general. And I know that several of the planning commissioners went to several of the work sessions and provided input. And the general consensus that I got is they felt comfortable with what was being presented. And I think, you know, my personal opinion when I read through it and looked at it was, there are a lot of things that, you know, if you try to look at it as a full-blown flushed-out design, you question, is this, is this how you would approach this based off of topography or other limitations? But I think if you look at this more as a set of general guidelines that kind of say, you know, we want a, we want a retail center here that may look something like this, but, you know, once an engineer and a design team gets in there, it may look a little bit different, but it's still going to have some kind of a feel of a retail center or whatever. I think, I think this comp plan does accomplish that. I've never looked at any comp plan that's ever been done in any city as a, as a hard and fast, by God, this is what this is supposed to look like in this area. But more of a general guideline that kind of guides you into, into what, kind of, what that end goal might look like. But it's just a guideline and not a hard and fast, this is what you're looking for. So I do think that northwest Arkansas especially, with the, with the recent articles that come out about bicycling and where we rank in the nation, very impressive, by the way, I think, for Bella Vista, that we were right up there with Rogers and Fayetteville, I think that's pretty cool. This comp plan does kind of take that into account and is looking at, what does that look like in the future for those intermodal connectivities and the nodes spread out throughout Bella Vista to make sure that all of the, all the citizens are having access to different amenities throughout Bella Vista? So that's my 32nd elevator speech, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, let's just go around the table here. As I see you on the screen here, it's probably a different setup that you're seeing at home. So I'll stop, start in the top-left corner. Waz?
Yeah, I think it relies almost too much on the fact of the trail system. You know, it's, it's in the woods kind of thing, it's up and down. It's good for someone who's healthy and a decent bike, but, you know, you yourself have taken it and gone head over heels. You know, relying really heavily on that being, not necessarily a panacea, but something that's really going to pull this together. And that may or may not happen. I would like for it to happen, but, you know, all the areas where we want to put this little center here and that little center here, you know, to draw people around. If you guys had been here long enough, when I first came here, where most of the big churches are, there used to be signs up, we're talking billboard highway sign size, that was saying, "Future Commercial Center", and it would list what it would have on it. There was half a dozen of those throughout Bella Vista, and that didn't even include the Highlands. And every one of those corners, back through the years, now has a church sitting on it. Because, you know, obviously, they're, they didn't think the commercial was going to fly, so they went ahead and took most of the prime, which is intersection stuff, Kingsland, Lambeth, Drifogee, 340, that kind of stuff. You know, they took all of that and we lost it, so there's a problem there. I would like also to see, he's got a lot of maps in there with a lot of stuff on them. If we could maybe get the maps a little bigger or more maps with less, less information on them, instead of having nine or 10 things or five... on them, instead of having nine or 10 things or five or six even on one map, maybe each one of those be separated out, so it'd be a little easier to read and understand, because it's so small and it's so busy that it's hard to pick a lot of stuff out, even though I, you know, I know where I'm coming from on that. So, you know, for starters, that's, that would be my big thing, we're really relying really, really heavily on the trail thing coming to fruition and bike trails and pedestrian stuff, and, you know, that would be my only thing that would, you know, that actually, you know, jumps out at me.
Okay, thank you. Graham, any thoughts?
No, not really. I, I guess my only reaction to that was the trail system does seem to be almost a way of life for most folks up there. Even the people that participated in the public meetings, my recollection were that don't necessarily use it, recognize that it's a tremendous economic value to the community. And so that was, that's the reason why it's so prominent, I think, is, well, that is the reason it's so prominent, but I understand where you're coming from, and the bigger maps, we can, we can certainly try.
You know, even if they're not bigger, just don't put so many things on each one.
We'll see what we can do.
Okay, thank you. Next, Mr. Flynn.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, because my reception's been a little funky, I've been able to hear everything well, but...
Yeah, your picture was frozen.
For a while, you guys were frozen, yeah. But anyway, one question I had for Graham, when you're talking about having a hotel or resort-type area, is it anticipated that that would necessarily be where one of those circles are, activity centers or whatever you call them?
Generally, yes. Our thought was, and through the economic analysis, was the area south along 71, where the grocery store just closed and the, just south of the golf course that is closed, was identified as more of a regional center. And one of the drawings that we had done and is in the plan, I don't know if you guys have it in front of you, but it's, it's really a conceptual, kind of a master plan at take at that regional center. And that idea was that you could tie that area directly into the Razorback Greenway as well as your own local Back Forty and any other system that comes through there in terms of those folks that want to use the trail system, but also being on 71, just people that are traveling through the community, that would be a logical place for a hotel because of visibility, access, adjacency to recreation and those types of things. So that's where, that's where it kind of came from, was trying to capture folks in that kind of area along 71. But generally, yeah, it would go best in those mixed-use centers.
And I might add, when we finally got in front of John Cooper and the rest of his executive team, we showed them the development or possible development in Town Center East, just north of Allen's, and in the Highlands area that Graham put up a few minutes ago, and there was absolutely no interest in pursuing it. In fact, John's comment about the now-closed Berksdale Course just north of Allen's was, that will always be recreational. That's what my grandfather wanted, there will be absolutely no commercial on there at all. As to development up in the Highlands area, you know, where the fairground is, again, there was, there was absolutely no appetite to pursue it. However, we felt that, that being said, we should still include the maps or the layouts that you just saw in the plan for the future. You can't just close it up and say, well, because Cooper doesn't like it, it may never happen. It should still be there for all to see and understand that this plan is not necessarily fixed in concrete, as Graham said in the beginning. This needs to be a living, breathing plan and one that has to be flexible enough to change. So sorry to interrupt, John, do you have some more questions or thoughts?
It's my understanding the Walton Family Foundation was in approval with this plan, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
They're part of the plan.
Okay. I had one more question. I've seen some complaining on Facebook about a plan that the POA apparently had or put together a couple of years ago or something. I'm assuming that's different from the plan we're working on.
Yes, I believe that plan was the one where Tom was suggesting a replacement to Reardon And he even had some renderings drawn up as to what it might look like, but it didn't go anywhere, and I think that's actually what led to one of the increased votes, which got shot down. But no, it's completely outside of this.
Okay.
I would, I would also add that in addition to Tom being on our advisory committee, we met, we met individually with Tom on multiple occasions just to make sure that the POA was comfortable with what we were talking about and, and we had a clear picture of what they were looking at for the future. So they were, I would consider them a good partner in this process and very participatory in, in helping with this process.
Okay, good, well, that's good to hear.
What else, John, I had? That's it, John?
Yeah.
Thank you. Let me see, Mr. Steve?
Well, Graham, I haven't had the opportunity to say hello before, so hello and thank you for all your team's work. I think we should all be mindful of being fair to the team with, you know, how many iterations of feedback they're given. They've, they provided, I saw a draft of this probably six months or so ago, and I think some of us felt like it was a little shallow in terms of how deep it went and how specific it was to our environment, that somebody used the term, it could have been a cookie cutter approach. And I think since then, I've seen a lot more muscle put into this, a lot more actionable suggestions there. And so I think we, we have to at some point kind of check ourselves, we've had a round of city council feedback already, that, that was asked for a couple of months ago and was provided back to, to the team, to Graham and his team, and they've integrated a lot of those suggestions into the plan. So having, having gone through these iterations where they started with the public and then they have an advisory council, and then they have the planning commission, and now they have the city council, and they're trying to factor in all of these kind of disparate, if you will, points of view and opinions, at some point, we want to check ourselves and just go to this kind of fundamental assessment of the plan, and that is, is it aligned to the residents of Bella Vista and their desires for the future? And is it directionally accurate? Not is it 100% detailed, every, every sentence has been filtered and edited and so on and so forth, but is it directionally accurate? And if it serves in the future, if it serves us, those of us who are involved in making strategic, providing strategic input for the city of Bella Vista, and those are members of the city council, members of the planning commission, senior members of city staff, if it provides a reference document for us that we can kind of bounce our ideas against that, I think that's really kind of the key to whether this has value to the city or not. Not to put it in a binder, in a fancy binder and put it on the shelf and it collects dust for the next several years. So is it actionable is kind of the key question that I've been asking of myself as I read, as I read the document, and I, I think that's one of the key criteria. And I think the citizen advisory council, I don't, they probably haven't, I don't know, you tell me, when's the last time they met? Since this has spanned now almost over three years, some of those people may not even live in Bella Vista anymore, I don't know. There's only one member of the advisory council on our call today, and that's Linda. So I wonder if we ought to, to the point of, is this aligned to the desires and the vision for the majority of the residents in Bella Vista? I wonder if we shouldn't be kind of circling back to the advisory council, the citizens' advisory council, in whatever form it might take, if there are updates that are needed to that, do we reform them one more time and just run this by them? It could be that form, or it could be in the form of public forums. We've seen Centerton holding public forums for their plan, and perhaps it's one last chance for us to get a read on what the residents of Bella Vista want for our community. So those are the things that I think are most important. I appreciate the effort that's gone into it, I think it's improved significantly since I saw it six months ago. And I would just close one more time and go back to Daniel and say, Daniel, when you guys look at this, does it, do you automatically start thinking in terms of, here's the next thing we need to do, here's the next change that we need to make, here's the next initiative that we need to drive? And maybe we should all be asking ourselves that, but since the planning commission was kind of in the stack prior to it, prior to today, I wonder if, if, Daniel, if you find that this document would be a reference document, document for you guys, and does it prescribe actionable items for you guys to engage in, in the next several months?
Um, I mean, yeah, I think it would be a guide that we would reference back to, you know, if somebody came to us wanting to, you know, develop in an area or whatever, I think, once this is adopted, you've got, you've got to look at this and compare to it. As far as like actionable items for the planning commission to take over the next few months, I, I may not be understanding exactly the question that you're asking, but, you know, I've always, I've looked at the planning commission, and we're, we're there to kind of just check the box that whatever's being proposed meets the ordinances that the city council's adopted. We're not there to set policies or to make changes, that's, that's what this body here's elected to do. But maybe, maybe I'm not understanding a question correctly.
No, no, I appreciate that. I do think the planning commission, in some regards to that point, Daniel, is underutilized. I think we have good talent on that, responsible citizens that have said on that, I've been a member of the planning commission myself previously, I think we're utilized in some cases, but if a zone change needs to happen, I think the planning commission has every opportunity to drive that change.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, and that's, that's, that's correct. You know, if, if somebody comes in and wants to do a rezon or whatever, I think, I think a comp plan like this is a, is a, is a tool that we would reference back to, to kind of see, you know, is, is the request is being made in line with what has been approved by the council as far as looking forward for the city? So absolutely, it would be.
Steve, if I could offer one thing, just in terms of next steps, and I, I can tell you, I think what the law sort of presupposes about the process, and maybe that would give you some additional guidance, but a city adopts a master plan, and then, once it's decided on a master plan, for example, this area at Rogers Road and, and the Highlands Gate, where you're, you're looking at that particular area being a city center, you know, then we need to look at our zoning code. Do our current zoning classifications fit that idea? Do we need to make different or new zones? Do we need to start allowing or not allowing certain things in our existing zones? Those would be zoning ordinance changes. Do, in terms of the development, do, are there certain design standards we want to have for the commercial areas there? If we, if we want to get granular in terms of what we want that area to be, then the city can look at design standards in terms of development in, in areas. You can look at, I mean, you, the, the scope of the city power in this area is big. In a typical city, we've got some additional considerations here because of the unique characteristics of our community and the POA and the covenants and all of that, but you can have things like overlay districts, where certain parts of town may have to be required to meet certain requirements that they generally wouldn't have to meet if they're in particular areas where we want to see certain things. So it becomes, it becomes a transition from plan to implementation. So we've got this idea, then apparently the city would want to see it, so it starts viewing its, it starts making changes to its existing requirements to facilitate it. And then one of the key things that would also happen is when property owners come for rezoning. I think the number one thing you look at in terms of what's, is this a good idea or not, is going to be that master plan. If someone comes in with some idea to rezone that area at Rogers Road and Highlands Gate, and it's going to be something that's totally non-conforming with this idea we've got for that area, the city's going to have every ground to deny that rezoning because it doesn't meet the plan. So this is, you know, you move from planning to implementation, and you, it depends on the plan as to what you need to do to implement.
I appreciate that, Jason, and I thank you for, for kind of helping me kind of articulate what some of those questions are, but I wonder, one of the things that you said, though, seemed to suggest that the way a zoning change comes about is when a member of the public, the planning commission asks to change a zone.
They ask to it all.
We could be proactive in that, looking at the plan and say, hey, this is where we would like to see a center in the future, is it zoned for that accurately today? Not waiting on somebody to come in and ask us for it, go ahead and start to act on those things.
You, you're exactly correct, and so you, you could create a zone and then, and zone it, and the city can make, take zoning actions on its own accord, it doesn't have to wait for a property owner to come. You're exactly correct about that.
Well, and that, that's why I go back to Daniel then, I say, Daniel, do you see anything in there that says, hey, they're making a primary suggestion that there'd be a town center in this area, and it's not zoned for that properly today? And, and wouldn't that be incentive or initiative to say, we're going to take this on ourselves to make some recommended zoning adjustments or, or change the zone?
Um, that may be, Jason may want to weigh on that also, I, I understand exactly what you're asking me now. Yes, you know, the city of Bella Vista, back in the day when we, when we became the city of Bella Vista, we did a, a master zoning plan or map and rezoned everything in the city of Bella Vista based off of what we thought Bella Vista was going to be, I guess that's probably over a decade ago. If, you know, if, if the city council were to direct the planning commission to look at doing some mass rezonings again, to bring some areas that have been identified in the comp plan, to back, to line up with that, then I do think that's something the planning commission can take on, but, but once again, I think it's, you know, the planning commission doesn't rezon it, we hold the public hearing to make a recommendation to you as a, as a council to actually rezon the property. So we, we can show some maps that staff prepares and let the public come and speak and, and make recommendations to you, but ultimately, you need to tell us what we need to do.
Fair enough.
We're advising the board only.
Right, fair enough, fair enough. And, and I think if we end up adopting this plan, that would be the guidance, and, and not necessarily only that, but it might well come to the point where we'd ask you guys to do that review again, and that may make your stomach turn, I'm sure there's a lot of work that goes into that, but that might be the ask, is if we adopt this plan, have the planning commission look at it and see if there are any big gaps between where we are today and what the plan, primary suggestions are for the future.
Stephen?
I was just going to say, I might add that on that very topic, if you kind of work the plan backwards, we've got a recommendation in the action plan to enable the development of activity centers in various scales and intensities. We identify zoning, development, subdivision standards, and the city as the entity that should be leading that charge. And if you, if you work backwards through the plan, you can immediately go back to the activity center idea in the different locations, and we'd spell out how those activity centers should be put together, ideally what they should consist of, and then you work that back further and you go back to the policies and goals, and it says right in there to follow a village pattern, and here's the villages, or here's the general location of some of those villages, and then you go back to the vision statement that says, we're going to be basically, says a lot of other things, but it also says, we're going to be a city of village, of village centers and strong neighborhoods. but it also says, we're going to be a, a city of vill- of village centers and strong neighborhoods. So to your point, Commissioner Bork, that's the, that is the backwards way to get to the, from action to the vision or from the vision to the action of actually allowing those things to happen. I, I, I wrote it down and I really like your directionally accurate statement because that is exactly what a comprehensive plan is supposed to be. It's supposed to be a framework for you all, as I said, for you all to understand what's important to the community because it's documented. And then as leaders in the community, have those discussions about how you move the community forward in that manner. So we're not trying to give you every answer. I don't think we could give you every answer if we tried. But we're trying to give you a framework to work within, to make sure you're moving forward the way the community has identified.
Steve, any other thoughts? No, I, I'll close just by saying somehow to circle back around, either through public forums or through reconvening the Citizen Advisory Committee one last time. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry for another iteration, but I think that alignment is key to support for this plan across the city. Does it align to what the majority of residents in Bella Vista wish for Bella Vista?
And I just looked through the Citizens Advisory Committee. I think most of them are still here, too.
I got some in the draft. And the only one I heard back was Stan Spring and he, he locked the plan.
Okay. Did you hear that, Steve?
I, I heard he shared a plan and didn't hear back from many people. So I appreciate that. I don't think that means we've checked that box. I think we would want to reconvene that team, bring them together, tell them we're nearing the, uh, fourth quarter here. We're in the fourth quarter of reviewing this plan and we're contemplating adoption of the plan. And we want to make sure that from where it started and where it ended up, that it still represents, uh, what the residents and, and the, the advisory committee wants for Bella Vista.
No, but I think the point is too, that they, they now have the document in their hand. So it's not as if we're going to hit them cold when we go to them and say, okay, now we need to pull you together.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
All righty, going around Linda.
Okay, um, I've been involved in numerous comprehensive plans over many years. And I think trying to have a, do a comprehensive plan in a city such as Bella Vista with the barriers that we have is an almost impossible task. Um, I feel that there was considerable, uh, citizen input and also committee input. And to kind of echo Daniel and Jason's comments, it gives us a framework. So if somebody does come in with a rezoning, we can say, oh, well, gee, industrial is not at all compatible with what's in this plan. And I think it's time to approve the plan. So we have a document that we can reference, that then we can maybe look at other zoning changes or ordinance implementation that needs to be done based on what's in the plan. But it's been a long time with a lot of input and, um, um, Graham's guys have taken that into consideration and put this forward.
Okay, thank you. Doug?
Yeah, um, you know, um, I, I don't really have like a lot of specific comments. Um, I, I did, I read the entire thing from start to finish. And at the end of the day, I say versus the first iteration that I read, whichever one that was. I, I thought that, I thought this, this, this final one that we're looking at here has more depth to it. And I'll, I'll just simply say, I, I, I think it's an honest plan. And it lays out for me what is possible. And I think that's really, you know, what I wanted to see. You know, all the details will have to figure, you know, will have to be figured out as we move forward. Uh, you know, I, we just got back from a long road trip. And if you look at a map, you know, so you can figure out where you need to go to get to your destinations, those maps don't generally give you the topography or the land features along the way. You know, you kind of see those as you go. It just, the map just kind of gets, gets you there, right? Uh, and you kind of have an idea, uh, what you're going to see when you get there, but it's, you're, you're not exactly, exactly sure. So, and, and it recognizes too, that we do have a hurdle here, you know, with Cooper. You know, there's a comment, it's on page six, right up front. You know, and the ability for Bella Vista to evolve has been largely stifled by restrictions and barriers established by the original developer years ago. And I don't think that really beats him up. It's just that's when everything was originally put together. I mean, that's, you know, John Cooper Senior or whatever is, you know, I don't know if he's a senior or what. Uh, in his original vision, he just kind of set things up like he did, and that's, that's the way it was. I will say this, whenever John Cooper Senior put all this together, he had a vision. And I don't know who he had with him and working with him to help kind of like put that together, but he knew what he needed to do. And I do think if he existed today, I don't know if somebody's typing, but, um, and he, he would see the current environment that we're in, I think he would change his perspective and adjust to today's, you know, environment that now exists that did not exist then. He developed something then based upon, based upon what he knew then and what people wanted then. But I do think he's the type of man that would have figured things out today and he would have made adjustments. So I'm just, just saying that for what it's worth. I think my, my question is like from this point forward is, who's the leader of the band? Right? We, you, you have to have someone that's going to take up the mantle and organize things, get the leaders together because it's recognized in the document that what? Their POA, city, Cooper, even the Townhouse Association. Somebody has to like organize this group of people and get them in a room and sit down and talk about where we kind of go from here. Because obviously we can't implement this whole thing at one time. It's just impossible. You have to sit down and kind of look at it and figure out where do we go first? What makes sense? I don't know if it's low hanging fruit or it could even be a large possibility in one of these properties that have been identified. Right? So like I said, I, you know, Steve was saying, well, maybe we bring these guys in and let's talk to them. Well, who's we? And how's that going to happen? I do think we need an advocate to take this and be responsible for kind of ushering it through and challenging people in order that this doesn't just end up on a shelf somewhere and no one refers back to it. But I do, I see like, I see a lot of really good thoughts and a lot of really good ideas in here. Uh, and you know what? It's kind of like when, when we were figuring out the accessory structure ordinance. You really couldn't get a perspective on that until you actually went out and walked some neighborhoods and saw how the footprints of houses were put together and where the front doors were. And just to see how, what was written originally just didn't really make any sense. Until we really get out and start walking around and kind of seeing these different areas and looking at them and reevaluating them, we're really not going to get a sense of probably where we need to go first anyway. But anyway, I, I don't want to like digress or anything. I'm just saying, good plan, it's an honest plan. It lets me see what's possible. Now, if everybody agrees, we vote, we implement it. Now how do we move forward? You know, what, what is that going to look like? Who, who are we, who are we going to task?
Right, I believe at a very high level, Doug, uh, for the immediate future in, in, in pulling the group back together again, that would be Doug and myself. But for the long term, um, I really think it's probably best in, in Doug's court, in CDS. And the reason I say that is because politicians come and go. But we need consistency in the core, which is the staff group that will say, well, just a second now. I can remember two years ago in a conference called blah, 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 blah. Or I can remember when we sat, you know, with the community group and went through it the very last time. So you've got that consistency moving forward. And then as you begin to use the, uh, plan as a guide to changing the zones, et cetera, again, you've got the consistency. So when you have yet possibly three new people coming on every, every so many years onto the council, there is someone who can say, and this is what happened and this is how it evolved and this is why we're here now. So that's sort of my initial response is on the short term, it's Doug and myself. In the long term, I think it's Doug and his team.
Yeah, I mean, i- i- just from what I've learned, I've been a little fortunate. I've got to watch some city leadership in other, in other places of the country. And these cities that have a tendency of being successful and being able to move forward, they have a really strong advert or advocate or two within the city. You know, that just kind of had that ability to kind of cut to the chase and sit down across the table from people and look them in the eye and kind of like make things happen. Now, I'm not saying that's not Doug. I hear about the organizational piece and they're always keeping up with it within their department. But, uh, I don't know, and I don't know. I'm kind of searching right now, do we, do we hire somebody to manage this like moving forward? Like a person that has responsibility for it? I don't know, I don't even know. Maybe it's not even a full-time job. But, uh, we're trying to tag somebody in the community to work along with Doug to keep, you know, because they, they have a lot of responsibilities themselves. Uh, just to be sure that this thing is continuously being moved forward. So anyway, I'm done.
Thank you. And lastly, Larry? Larry, you're on mute.
He's on mute. You got me? Steve? Can you hear me now?
Yes. Well, it says that you're still muted.
Uh, it says. Oh, I turned off my.
You're cutting in, yeah, you're cutting in and out, Larry. If you're talking now, we can't hear you. We can't hear you at all. Larry?
Yeah, I'm unmuted. I have lovely connection outside. Um, my AT&amp;T service won't support the speed on this, so I'm better off with my tablet outside. I, like Linda, have had fairly extensive experience in working on planning reports in, in my career, uh, like this, uh, for development and other things. And, and based upon that, I've found that it's important that we fully state situations as they are now and also state what is needed to achieve future goals and objectives. And gross, I think this report largely does. I think there's some refinements that are probably warranted to get us in the trail or down the trail, uh, where we need to go. Uh, I want to thank, thank Graham and his team because this draft has gone a long way from the prior one in terms of meeting many of these objectives. However, I think it falls short in some of the areas uh, where we need to be a little more candid and a little more direct in terms of what we outline in the plan as well as in the implementation schedule. Sometimes being politically correct is wonderful, but this is a document that should not be correct, but must be candid and state what is, the obstacles are clearly and identify corrective measures or actions that are needed to relieve them, resolve them, or to solve them to achieve desired results of the plan. Do you still hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, being ambiguous in the report in some areas are, or stating generalities really doesn't provide a clear enough framework for staff or the elected officials or the Planning Commission in terms of directive, directive. Uh, and it certainly will not provide that for future leaders, uh, our successors on the various places. On page 130, I think the plan goes way beyond, uh, high level. And one of the things I noticed in here is that it lacks any identification of the town areas as alternative, uh, current residential development styles. And I'm surprised about that. It's mentioned in various places, but there's no particular comment about that as an alternative housing style in the city that much referred to this. Think the plan lacks some verbal mention, particularly since in 2017, uh, our plan or proposal for a fire station number three replacement, uh, fire training center, and maybe even a police station and court facility were perhaps, uh, figments of our imagination. I think this plan really needs to include references to those that it needs to say, we need to replace fire department station three. We need a fire training facility that would be converted into a future fire station number five. And I think we need to say in here that the new police department and court complex is warranted by the city.
Larry, those things are already in motion. Why would we do that? And it sounds to me as if that's going a little too far down the rattle. I don't want to pin any council down. I don't understand why we want to do that.
Respectfully, Mayor, I would disagree with you. This document was started in 2018 and, uh, these were still, you know, early, early items in the planning concept phase at that time. I think they deserve mention in this final report. As a confirmation to say, yep, we're doing the right thing by going ahead with these three facilities. It gives us a pat on the back. And it gives us a confirmation that what we've done here is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan that's been put together. I, I would argue with you respectfully, it needs to say that because it isn't said anywhere else. It isn't said in the comprehensive plan that you're currently working under that was done, what, in 2012? And it needs to say it here because it was a part of that early concept when this plan started. So I respectfully disagree. I think it needs to just have honorable mention. We need to do these things for the betterment of the community and meet the community needs. Simple statements, uh, in the implementation section. I think you said that we could submit written comments, at the end of this, Doug, uh, for, for the report. I do have a few. And that we need, and also it should say in here that we need a new city, uh, city hall or city administrative building that consolidates administrative staff, code enforcement, planning and permits sections.
I think we have to be careful pinning down future decisions like that for examining, talking here and wondering why we even have a city hall.
Well, we're, we're not saying go tomorrow. We're saying need to plan for it in the future. It's all that says.
Perhaps.
Maybe.
But we've found that having people working at home and being able to measure them thanks to COVID has proved to be very beneficial for us. So maybe city hall really just consists of the city clerk, you know, the mayor and assistant. And then for those of you that have come out of the business world, you know what I mean when I say hot seats? So that if, if a director wants to come in, say, two days a week, there's either an office, um, or a cubicle that they can come in and do their work. If it's HR, probably a closed office. That's the kind of thing that we're looking at. But I don't want to, I don't want to peg, or, you know, a, a future mayor and a future, um, council into saying, well, we should have a city hall. Because I, we can certainly say that it might be something that we would like to look at in the future. But I don't want to get too specific because that may not be the direction that the next mayor goes.
Well, I, I, I think you need to, uh, to look at the fact that currently your Community Development Services Office, which your code enforcement permits and planning are in one location. And your city administrative staff are in a separate location where the fire department would like to take it over and make it into a, a bigger fire station one. And so I think that is a concept that's been expressed by your fire chief, our fire chief. And I'm assuming with your, your understanding and agreement. So the, the bird is, the, the, the bird is out of the bag or the cat is out of the bag in that regard. We're not saying that you need to go ahead tomorrow. We're not saying that you need to go ahead tomorrow, but they need to consider that. Not say build it, put a timeframe in there.
But you see, there, we don't necessarily have to build. You know, one thing we've been looking at is after the court has moved, do we take city hall and move it up beside Doug's? Do we want to pursue buying that building? You probably don't know, but the jeweler's moving out. She's moving to Bentonville. So do we take it over and we become landlord of that space? Or are there other cities?
But that would be fulfilling that idea, that concept. How do you do that? You rent all the space up there and put us there, or you buy the building and say, that's our new city hall. All I'm suggesting is to consolidate the remaining function to the government under one roof, both for the city administrative staff and other things. I, I think, I think it bears an honorable mention in here without providing anything else anymore than the honorable mention of needing to replace fire station three with a facility that meets the needs of the fire department for service to that area. And it's a simple statement.
I don't know that, but if you feel you'd like it in there, I'm sure we can incorporate it. It'll be, it'll be one of the comments that, that will come forward. In reference to Doug, he said he was wondering where John Cooper came up with his plan for the city. I would suggest that he do a read of the vision of Bella Vista that's available at five bucks down at, at Allen's Grocery. It's a good read, and, and it's an interesting history of Bella Vista, in particular, all of the Cooper community's development aspects. I, I think that the key to this whole, this whole report is in part the body that Graham has outlined for us. But the key for the elected officials is what's in the last section, the implementation section. And it does outline some things that need to be done in terms of code updates, as Graham mentioned, and as others have commented about. The question would be, do we want to get into some of the things that are in that's recommendations, such as form development or architectural standards? We do have in our code now, I believe, landscaping standards, do we not, Doug?
We do have some.
And, and so do they need to be upgraded, in your opinion? Or adjusted for the scenarios that are provided in this document for development? No, Larry, I think you're going way too far into the weeds on this thing. This is a guide, you know, for the future, not worrying about, you know, is there something in there for landscaping and then architectural thing? Because we've also got the reality that we still have to deal with an ACC. And that's part of the governance.
It is, but it has little to do what the city requirements are in some respects.
You also have to remember, Jason, if I remember correctly, in the last legislative session, didn't they take away from the cities the ability to set the standards?
They've denied cities the right to set residential design standards.
But not commercial.
But not commercial. So that's a limitation.
I think, Jason, do you know, Jason, do you know, does that include multifamily complexes as well, or just single family?
I think it's any residential, Larry, but I would have to go back and look at that law to give you a correct answer.
I thought the focus was single and two families, but I'm not sure.
You, you may be correct. I would just need to check that for you, and I could certainly do that.
One of the questions, or a couple of questions that I have on page 91. Page nine, and you showed us that illustration, Graham. It's an illustration of, of Village Center, Village Center area, I think. It's a Village Center land use diagram.
It's Town Center West.
What he's, what they're showing here?
Oh, no, no, no. I'm sorry. That's down by Allen's.
That's the Allen's, yep.
So this is the, is this the golf course area that's shown here?
Yes.
Okay. So the representation, does that show a revision to, to Sugar Creek complex? Is this a revision to that? In other words, a full redevelopment?
The golf course area that is closed at the moment might look like.
Well, it goes down to Dartmoor Road. So the, so the lower left corner of that graphic in 91 would seem to be the existing complex that's there, including the two banks and Sonic and all of the strip mall shopping and Allen's. The question would be, my point would be that, that on the west side, we don't show any, any concept for the west side development along there. I think it would really be beneficial to plan incorporate some ideas for that west side. From Oldham all the way south to beyond Dartmoor, down there, almost down to Sunset, really. Because that's, that's non-Cooper territory, it's privately owned, and what could be good, good or suitable, conceptually anyway, development that might occur in there. I think it would be beneficial for this plan to include that. And then on page 99, which is the neighborhood center or Town Center East, and, and I guess what that illustrates to me and why Cooper probably wasn't happy with it is that it shows a complete redevelopment of the whole site up there. They upgraded, upgraded harks, and they've upgraded the upper level storefronts and the parking area. To me, the plan that's on page 99 is, is kind of an unworkable plan, because it shows in this concept of redevelopment, all of the parking way down low next to the on-ramp to 71 North. And so you have to go up levels and levels and levels to get to the area on top. It totally ignores the other existing commercial development we have in this neighborhood, both to the east of here on Lancashire and to the south of here. It has no coverage on Town Center West at all. And we know that that's an existing development, but they show nothing in there about what the possibilities might be for us. I think it's lacking that whole vision, good, bad, or otherwise. But those are two, two common areas. The graphic on page 101, there's some disagreement between what's presented in this report on the graphics on page 51, page 65, and I think 101. There's some different discrepancies between those three graphics. In response to Waz's comment, you'd like to see them bigger, I guess my suggestion to Graham might be is to put these unfolded out 11 by 17s. That would give you a much bigger image and much more legible. And my comment was also, illegibility is a problem, and you need a magnifying glass to read a lot of it. With respect to, with respect to those areas, we go back to 51. There's no mention on graphic, the graphic on 51 relative to the existing Village Center Mall, and that's where we have Duffers, and we have the DCS offices and the court. There's nothing in here that even identifies that. I didn't see it in the text of the document either. Or if it was, it was kind of a, two words here in a sentence, and it was gone. On, on page 51, you, you label Town Center East as a type one neighborhood center. And I'm thinking that because of the potential up there for shop and stores, maybe it qualifies as a type two Village Center, but I'm not sure. Certainly is, seems to be much farther along than a type one would be based on your other locations.
Larry, could I speak up just one second in answer to your question about the residential design standards? You are correct. It does not apply to multifamily structures or other non-single-family dwellings. So apartment buildings and condo complexes would be included, could, could have residential, could have standards.
Could have some standards in them.
Yes, sir.
And, and the graphic on page 59, Graham, didn't have too many comments there, other than they, they should align with the other ones. On 65, my, my question is that you show priority bike routes. Some of them are along state trunk highways, local streets, and some of them are, are in the green space or in what you might be called common property corridors. And I'm not sure when you say priority one, priority two, priority three, nowhere in the document does it talk about those, other than this, this map shows the three priorities. And I'm, I'm concerned that to look at the map and say, okay, here's the priority bike routes, number one, number two, number three. Are any of those under construction now? Are they under construction? Is a timeline to do those that's within city financial means to accomplish it. And so my suggestion is that we might want to break those into segments that are more cost efficient for the city, unless they're already under construction, and, and we should show that then. On page 73, it talks about the transit park and ride options.
Larry, rather than go through page by page, are you able to put on this down in writing and submit it to us?
Yeah, I'm just hitting some, yeah, I'm hitting some highlights here.
Well, you know, you're hitting too many highlights, Larry. You need to put it down into writing place. Because if you look at screens...
Mayor Pete, I will be happy to do that.
Great. That'd be super. Okay. We've been at it almost an hour and a half. Does anybody want to add any parting words? Anybody on staff? Derek, do you have any comments?
No significant comments at this time. I would just kind of echo some of the, the thoughts that have been transferred on the, on the meeting call. I think it, it is a, it is, we need to keep in mind, it is an overall guidance doc. If it gives us energy and direction about ways to go from policy and other directions, I, that's, that's one of the best ways that we can use it. And really appreciate Graham and his team for keeping an open ear about our, I think, our, our, our different requests for iterations and, and edits. And so thanks for the teamwork to everyone that's been involved thus far.
Thank you, Doug.
Thanks, Mayor. I'd just like to say that I've, I've taken notes, trying to get down everyone's comments and questions that have spoken today. And I will, I'll get this prepared so that Graham and I can work together to get these implemented into the plan. And then I will also follow up with the Citizens Advisory Board and the Steering Committee, if need be, to, to see if they want a final copy, or if they want to get together in person to get some feedback for them. So I will start the process of getting that all set up.
Great. And Honorable City Clerk?
Questions?
All right. Yes, Larry?
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, we can.
Okay. The question would be, we talked about at the end of the, the last work session or the last council meeting, we talked about two to three months to work through this, get everything finally oiled and greased and finalized. Is that the timeline you're kind of thinking about?
Yes.
So we'd be looking at, today is June, so we'd probably be looking at August for adoption. Does that kind of put us in that two to three month thing?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That helps, I think helps everyone for timing.
Right. Waz?
We just need to all remember, just because it's not in the plan, that doesn't mean it's not going to happen. And if it is in the plan, that doesn't mean that has to happen either. This is a long stretch. Things change financially, economically, everything else. Just because it's not there, doesn't mean we can't do it, or if it is there, that we have to do it. And we need to keep that in mind all the way down the road. Because look at how much things have changed in the last two or three years. We need to keep in mind that just because it's not happening, doesn't mean it's got to happen.
Thanks.
Just one last, no, I just want to say, Graham, thanks a lot. You know, I know this was like a struggle for you guys, you know, to get through this thing. I mean, there's a lot of different entities, as you found out, that are involved. I just do have one last question. I would appreciate it if, if you would put like a car wash in for the west side somewhere, if you could just like...
That's missing.
Just one, one thing, just one thing.
We got a hose that can get it. Lot beside your house, Doug.
Yeah.
So you can take the cars a little bit free day.
We'll have to take that back to a vote of the people, so we might be able to.
Mayor Christie, you, you mentioned earlier, speaking with John Cooper, that he, he mentioned that land would never be anything other than recreational. I think we're talking about the land north of Sugar Creek Center. Now, there's been a change in leadership at Cooper. Do we circle back around now and see if we, we don't have some fresh takes over there on what, what their vision for the future is?
Yes. Yes, I did circle around. Kent really didn't say that much, other than John is still the, the chairman of the board. So it would have to go to the board. So I suspect he was politely saying, don't keep your hopes up. Anyone else? Okay, we'll see you at the, at the work session.
Next Monday.
Next Monday at 5:30. And, and you've published the agenda?
Yes, went out today. So everybody should have received it. And then you'll be getting your link. Will be sent out for your panelist link. Public access link is already published, so.
And there are a couple of resolutions that are missing, but they're going to be in the discussion area. They're already listed. One was the civil engineers, CEI, they haven't got their contracts in yet for Jason to review. And there was another one.
Bond underwriter.
Oh, and the bond underwriter. We're still working with Raymond James on getting that one fixed up as well. So there's still more to come. Yes, Larry?
Larry, speaking? A final, title question. I have to turn you, turn my mute off. Number of documents from Attorney Kelly for review, are all of those, will some of those be on for action this coming meeting?
Larry, they're all on the agenda. Everything I sent to you preliminarily to give you, give you a little extra time. I believe all that's on the agenda.
Now, every one of those items is there, Larry. If you go through the packet that was sent out today, you'll be able to review all.
All right. I hadn't seen the packet for today, Wayne, so that's why I was asking.
Right. It went out earlier. Okay, Graham, patience of Job, my friend. Thank you very much. Dennis as well.
Thank you.
We'll see you soon. Thank you all.
Talk to you soon. Thanks.
Bye-bye.
Yeah, bye.